Well, good morning. Today is the nineteenth day of Sept- December. Uh, the time is nine o'clock. Uh, the board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Uh, Commissioner Daley and myself are here. Commissioner Davidson is absent. Uh, Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, our first item up is a staff recognition. Uh, no, wait a minute, we need to introduce everybody. Start over here, introduce yourselves. We forgot that.
Antonio Serry, Ada County IT.
Steve Rucker, Commissioner's office.
Ryan Paternoster, Ada County IT.
Joshua Smith, Ada County IT.
Jay Hatch, Ada County IT.
Josh Brown, Ada County Operations.
Stephen Omera, Ada County IT.
Tom Lightfield, Ada County IT.
Emily Weiss, Ada County IT.
Erin Brady, Assessor's Office, Emery Lynn and Rebecca and Brad.
Christian Lindkey, Ada County Judicial Services.
Wendy Segretis, Juvenile Services.
Audrey Ada, The Bridge Youth and Family Resource Center.
Allison Page, Juvenile Services.
Original IT guy.
Madam Dooling, Ada County IT.
Tr- Triple Clerk.
Beth Ma, Treasure.
All right, well, good, well, thank you. Uh, we need to re- record, our nurse, our clerk needs to have everybody's name, so this just makes it easier for her. Okay, right? Okay, thank you. All right, the first item up on our gen- on our agenda is staff recognition. Uh, selection of Acorn Assessment Center Outcome Reporting Network, uh, juvenile services and information technology. The Bridge Youth and Family Resource Center has, was recently selected as one of six centers from across the country to participate in the National Assessment Center, Association's Acorn Initiative, and one of only two centers in the Advanced Data Capacity category. I'm sure you'll tell us what that is. This product, uh, cohort will work with a training and technical assistance team over the next year to improve and increase the consistency of assessment center data, including outcome and performance measures. The six centers will receive technical assistance from the NAC and experts at the National Center for Juvenile Justice, the Research Division of the National Council of Juvenile and Family Court Judges, and Case Western University. This includes regular meetings focusing on different aspects of the NAC framework and one-on-one work sessions with the expert coach, Gene Siegel, Senior Research Associate with the National Center for Juvenile Justice. Gene will also facilitate peer-to-peer sessions with the Harvard Juvenile Assessment Center. The Bridge is a partner in the Advanced Data Capacity category. Although the Bridge is a newly established resource center, it was chosen for the advanced category for its excellent data team and top-notch case management system. Bridge staff worked with Ada County's information technology development and project teams to develop a program that would facilitate referrals, assessment, and resource connections for youth and families. Ada County chose to leverage its enterprise case management platform, Highland On Base, to customize the system to the center's needs. The team collaboratively conducted business analysis, workflow discovery, and product design and detailed reporting characteristics. Once the design was in place, roughly ten months of development and testing led to the creation of the Bridge CMS. The Acorn Initiative will result in well-defined measures to consistently report outcomes and performance and align across centers. It will provide guidance to improve business practices and measure success so the Bridge can continue to provide meaningful services to improve outcomes for youth and families in Ada County. Thank you all for participating and creating that. It's, 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 it's a great thing. Would you like to say something, not Allison?
Sure, thank you. We're just really thankful for the partnership and collaboration that led us to this place. Uh, we want to be successful, we want to do a good job, but we'll only, we'll be able to be successful in the long run if we measure um, our outcomes and look at our data. And this case management system has just set us up so well. Um, I don't, I think everyone that's looked at it has been envious of the case management system and it has assisted us in doing our work um, and following the protocol of the National Assessment Center Association. So, thank you all for being here. Uh, Director Omera certainly, certainly, um, jumped in to help and his team's fabulous.
Good, well, he's gonna talk next.
That's why, that's why I was pointing.
Go ahead.
Guess so.
Yes.
A couple of things about this project. Incredibly valuable to have a team who, uh, knew what they wanted from outcomes. They, they know what they wanted, like, from a software point of view, but they knew what the outcomes had to be. And we did have a tight window based on the grant, and so that was certainly energizing. Uh, but that really made the difference on this project. Really knowledgeable people who were very motivated to do something and, and like I said, knew what they were after. Uh, so, big time hats off to Director Dean, Director Mary Band of Juvenile Service folks and the Bridge folks. Very proud, I, I, I can speak for my whole team, we're very proud of being part of this project. And really, the timeframe was pretty, pretty drastic. Both our clerk and treasurer can attest to how long sometimes software stuff takes. Uh, we got lucky with this one, but, um, I think the product is really good. And we're excited to see what you guys do with the Bridge. And we're happy to be just, just a little piece of, of the success we think you're gonna, you're gonna have and how you're gonna impact all the youth, so. Very thankful, Dean Hart.
Well, thank you. And you, you've evidenced once again that we at Ada County are a family. And we work together for the betterment of the, of the whole and for the betterment of our community. And I want to thank you both for, for your collaborative efforts and, uh, making a successful program. Uh, we're gonna have to go see the Bridge. I haven't been out there since we cut the ribbon.
Open invitation.
So, we'll, we'll have to. Now, we sent some stuff out to you, but we haven't been out there. Anyway, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, just, just, uh, to reiterate, uh, here, here to what's already been said. Uh, this is an example of, I know in Idaho, we're called the Great State of Ada, but this is an example where even nationally, they're recognizing the Great State of Ada. Uh, and the teamwork we do here, uh, as you said, this is how we're all successful, is by individually being successful, then working together, and the column is successful. So, this is a perfect example of that. Identifying an issue, a need in the community, and then figuring out ways to address it. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you all. Appreciate it. Yeah, give him a hand. Yes, thank you.
I think we need a motion there for the resolution.
Okay.
Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution 2945 as listed on the agenda, which is one of the chair.
Um, no.
Correct, it isn't?
No. Resolution 2945, that's the next item on the, on the, on the agenda.
That's clerk's budget, okay.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion for this, this is recognizing the staff.
Okay.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Well, you can hang around if you want to.
All of this exciting, all of this exciting.
Well, be careful, black eyes out there. Yeah. Okay.
Now, now you want.
Now we're on new business.
Now you want the resolution.
Well, not yet, we have to open the public hearing on Resolution Number 2945. This is a resolution adjusting the, uh, Ada County budget to reflect receipt of unscheduled revenue to the clerk of the court's budget. Would you like to tell us about that?
Tell us what it is?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Since I didn't know, obviously.
Yeah, this is, this is a great opportunity for our office. Uh, every, not every year, but generally, uh, most years, based off the HAVA, um, legislation from the federal government to help America Vote Act. Um, there's grant money that's available. Uh, that gets dispersed to the state, and then the state has a formula of distributing it up to the counties, uh, based off of number of registered voters and some other things. Um, our grant portion this year is a hundred and thirty-two thousand and some change. Um, but it requires a, a, not a, a one-to-one match, but there is some matching funds that we have to produce in order for the Secretary of State to release those funds to us. We have proven to them that we have a plan to match that fund, so this is, they've released the funds to us now so that we can use those and, and, uh, addressing some equipment need and some other things, uh, when the elections, so. Um, that's what this is. It's opening up the budget, bringing in that hundred and thirty-two thousand, uh, so that we can put it into elections budget and then spend it on, uh, buying some additional equipment. So, we're excited for it.
Well, great. Is there any other discussion on the, uh, resolution? No, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2945.
And now you can make your motion.
And now I can make the motion. An appropriate time.
Yes.
I move to approve Resolution 2945 as listed on the agenda.
Thank you, I'll second the motion. You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Just, just a comment on this as well, thanks to the clerk. This is the kind of innovative things, again, what we were just talking about, even the cages and other things that they're doing election-wise that are, uh, they're innovating for, not only the state, but, uh, nationally, they're looking at the ways we're being innovative and making sure our elections are secure and, and well done.
Exactly. Thank you, all right. Uh, moving on, we have, uh, a change order, number one, the Ada County Public Safety Building, underground fuel tank removal. Uh, this is change order number one, this is a decrease. I guess that's in our contingency, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all right. Okay, uh, I'll accept a motion to approve change order number one.
I move to approve change order number one, Ada County Public Safety Building Underground Fuel Tank Removal.
Okay, I'll second the motion. You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we have licensing. Uh, Eastside Tavern Castle for end-of-year Corvette party. Uh, I'll accept the motions on the licensing, catering permit, and the license transfers.
I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including one catering permit, three license transfers, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we have the claims journal. We got a pair of bills still. Uh, I'll accept the motion on the claims journal.
I move to authorize payment of the claims on the claims journal dated December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we have some personnel actions.
Does the clerk think we should get to talk again, or has he already talked?
Uh, we skipped the clerk. Oh, yeah. No, let's do the clerk. We're, I'm sorry. We, we skipped right over top our distinguished clerk, Mr. Trimp, Trimp Triple, Clerk Triple. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, uh, we're just in the middle of a, not in the middle, tail end of an audit. We hope to hear the results of that audit sometime this week, um, from Aid Bailey. Uh, all signs point to it, it's, it's going well, but, uh, we'll wait till the final report comes out. They're excited for holiday break. They've been busting their tails for weeks trying to get that, uh, audit done and close out the books for the fiscal year. Uh, employees are also extremely grateful of the commission for the extra day, uh, that was offered during the holiday break. They're taking full advantage of that, uh, and they're, they're excited for some downtime as well. And then we're in the middle of a design phases for both the first floor remodel as well as elections, uh, making sure we get a, a good plan for what we want to do in both those spaces, so. Uh, that's a report from the clerk's office.
Well, are you sure you don't want to have, say, you know, I skipped over, got you, got you.
You can skip over me anytime.
Well, we just appreciate your report, appreciate your, uh, your, uh, continued activities and doing a good job for the county, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the personnel actions in.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Second the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, now we have the assessor's office, and we have.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
And.
Welcome to our meeting.
Commissioner Daley, thank you. Um, I'm here, like I said, for Rebecca and Brad. Brad's at BTA this morning. Um, we had a big appeal yesterday in front of the BTA. It lasted about six and a half hours. It was kind of exhausting. Um, we have, after today, we'll have two more commercial hearings. We have the Six Walmarts next month, as well as the Al- Albertson's Corporate Office. So, once January closes, we should be done with BTA. We don't have any decisions back, but we feel like everything's gone smoothly, um, and that we've represented the county well. Uh, reappraisal is also wrapping up. We have, uh, between residential and commercial, we have about forty-eight thousand reappraisal parcels, and we're about ninety-five percent complete, so. Um, once the new year rolls over, we'll have winter school for a week, and after that, we're gonna jump right into all of our pre-assessment processes in advance of assessment mailing in May, so.
What's winter school?
Uh, as appraisers, we have to, uh, meet certain continuing education requirements. So, the Tax Commission and our professional organization, International Association of Assessing Officers, they offer, uh, two-week-long sessions, one in winter, one in summer, just so we can all maintain our continuing ed, uh, requirements that the Tax Commission holds over us.
Thank goodness for the Tax Commission.
Exactly.
And where's this winter school held?
Uh, Red Lion and, um, the Tax Commission.
Oh, so here, okay.
Yep, yep.
And assessors come in from, uh, from all across the state.
All across the state, yep.
Take this, so you're lucky you stay home.
I know. It was out great for us.
Well, great. Well, uh, thank you, we do have a casualty loss. And so, uh, we'll need to, uh, pass out, I'll accept a motion on the casualty loss.
I move to approve the one casualty loss as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Now, I'm not gonna, I would never skip over the treasurer's office. We have with us our distinguished treasurer.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Welcome to our meeting.
Well, thank you.
We should appreciate your consistent attendance at our meetings.
Well, thank you. Happy to be here.
Yes.
So, tomorrow, December twentieth, is the property tax due date.
It's the deadline.
It's the deadline. So, just a reminder to everyone, there's the option of paying in full the twenty-twenty-three tax bill or paying half. Um, and if the first half is paid, then there's a deferral or a grace period for the second half that is due next June twentieth. Um, and just as a reminder, state law requires us to assess a two percent late charge tomorrow night on delinquent parcels, so. We encourage people to pay on time at one of our very, one of our various options.
Now, if it's postmarked tomorrow, you don't have to actually receive it tomorrow.
That is correct. So, we could receive it in February, but so long as it has the United States Post Office, and that's different from a Pitney Bowes or a Neogah, not those.
Yeah, they can be manipulated.
Correct.
Right.
And a reminder to people that live in western Ada County, who want to do it in person.
Um, thank you for that. Um, yes, they can pay at our Public Administration Building. That's at one eighty-two North Cloverdale, Cloverdale and Franklin. They'll be fully staffed through tomorrow at five P M.
And I just had, somebody asked me that question, that's why, and they didn't know. I said, yeah, I have to drive all the way down. And no, you do not have to drive all the way down.
Thank you for helping share that message, yes. Um, I'll also note that this morning, we have received from the state the funds for the property tax relief, so the homeowners' property tax relief fund and also funds for the additional property tax relief. Um, those funds were in our bank account today, so we will process those on everyone's parcel.
So, they don't get the two percent penalty?
Well, um, this, correct. Now, a parcel could still receive a penalty. Yeah, the state, the state does not.
State doesn't get the two percent penalty.
Correct.
They, they made the deadline.
They did.
Well, that's good. That's good. And you, you got the wires from the two or three tax service companies that, uh, process most of the mortgages.
Correct. Yep, we're, we're processing those.
So, the jogger will go down silent for the next, after, after the next week or two.
It's still busy for the mailed-in payments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's our priority for the rest of this week and into next week.
All right. Well, I want to extend a, a thanks to you and your diligent staff for figuring this whole thing out. I know it's been a, it's been a shove. I, 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 I often say, people ask, what's the difference in being a member of the legislature? Because both Tom and I were members of the legislature, Beatty County Commission. Legislature flies over the terrain about thirty thousand feet, and then they throw something down like two ninety-two, and we catch it. And you caught it. And we have to then figure out how to do it. And I appreciate your, uh, your efforts, that's great. We, the citizens of Beatty County can be very proud of your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Yes, and, and, uh, point out again for the, those who are listening or may listen later, that extra work that your office had, did, uh, on behalf of the taxpayers of Beatty County so that they could in fact get their notices on times or that they could pay their tax bill on time, so. And that was very late hours that you, uh, you spent, you and your staff spent, so.
Wasn't a small glitch, did, did you figure out what happened with that fire district thing?
Yep, a reporting thing, so.
Oh, okay, well, good, well, at least it didn't change anybody's taxes.
Did not change any amounts.
Yeah, well, well, again, thank you for your, uh, for your, for your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have the approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Now, we have a couple of grants, a grant worth from Bureau of Justice Assistance, uh, for State Criminal Alien Assistance Program. Okay. Anyone here want to speak about that? Yes, none. Okay, accept a motion.
I move to approve the award for grant number twenty-three oh eight B authorized, and authorized the online acceptance of the grant number twenty-eight, twenty-three oh eight B by Nolan Personnel of the Sheriff's Office and authorize the chair to sign the documents, appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
We have another grant, uh, twenty-three ten A B. Uh, grant application award to the U, uh, to the U S Department of Homeland Security, Idaho Office of Emergency Man- Management for the two thousand twenty-three State Homeland Security Grant, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. Uh, no county match. The grant period is nine, one, to two twenty-eight. Related to Agreement Number one five five three three, I'll accept a motion.
Did you want any statement on that?
I don't see anybody here, it's, it's, it's our emergency management stuff.
Okay. Uh, I move to approve grant number twenty-three ten A B and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries, all right, we have the Expo Idaho. Uh, we have four interim, uh, events, a boat show, a Fit First Expo, uh, Anamine and, and Quincy Nera. I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the four interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Thank you, I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. We now have the, uh, Barber Park and Ed- Education Event Center, four events. I'll accept a motion on those.
I move to approve the four Barber Park Education Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Now, we have seven agreements. Uh, anyone here wish to speak about any of the agreements, question?
Mr. Chairman, just before, th- those last, the, the grants and the expo and the parks, I, it is another example of how, uh, Ada County staff helps the taxpayers of Ada County by leveraging grants and all these things, all these events help pay for the maintain, maintenance and upkeep of the parks and of Expo Idaho, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you to the staff of Ada County for being conscious of their taxpayer money. We're not our taxpayers too.
And it looks like there's two weddings and a rotary meeting, and, uh, and a, three weddings, actually, a rotary meeting at the expo, at the park. Yeah, great. Okay, we have, uh, seven events. Any discussion on any of the, uh, not events, seven, uh, agreements? Do we have any discussion on any of the agreements that are, uh, before us? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the seven agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye. Just as, as, as a point as well, that this is, one of these agreements, uh, is the Sheriff's Office with the city of Starr. Uh, for the people of Ada County may not know that, but the Ada County Sheriff's Department, uh, contracts with certain cities in, in Ada County to provide police services, and Starr is one of them, so.
Starr, Kuna, and Eagle.
Correct.
And that's a cooperative agreement to, uh, help the taxpayers in those, in those communities top-notch police services at a lower price.
That is correct.
Okay, good enough. Now, moving on, we have a miscellaneous item, an amendment to a grant of easement. Do we have any discussion on that? Where is it? I'm not familiar with this.
It's circulated with, with the M dogs.
I don't know what.
But heck, there was no advice letter with it, it just was this. And it looks like it's, has to do with the Ada County, Ada Canyon Trail System. It came from operations.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, uh, forgive me, I didn't realize that made it to the agenda today.
Yeah?
So, the Ada County, um, trailway that's behind the Staker Parsons, Sun Rock, uh, and all the other properties that are, um, along with the new Green Belt project that we have.
Yeah.
There were some easement agreements that we finally got some signatures back. Uh, that easement is basically stating that the Green Belt, the current alignment, um, that was on file changed a little bit to allow for all the widening of the Green Belt and the placement of the fence, uh, which you see before you is a signed copy executed from, uh, the.
Tim Brown.
Yeah, which that one should be, uh, Staker Parsons, is that correct?
Yeah, Staker Parsons, yes, yes, correct. Uh-huh.
I'm sorry, Chairman, you know what? Um, you're correct, Josh, this, um, actually was supposed to be tabled.
Oh.
Because this exhibit wasn't provided.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay, we'll table it till we get the exhibits in. All right, good enough.
Till next Tuesday.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to table it till, uh, Jan- till December twenty-sixth. Correct?
Did, did it have a number?
Um.
Or ju- or just the grant agreement?
Well, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's already recorded, but, uh, recorded as number one one zero one one seven nine three zero.
So, I move to table the amendment to the grand easement between Ada County and Staker Parsons Companies? And do we need to give the number in the motion?
Uh-uh.
No. To, we'll table it until the, till the twenty-sixth of December.
Until the twenty-sixth of December.
Okay, we have motion to table, uh, this until twenty-sixth of December. twenty-sixth of December, to, because we have a couple of attachments we need to look at that are not here, right, okay. You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other business we need to take, uh, take up while we're here? If there are none, we're adjourned. Well, good morning, uh, today's the nineteenth day of December, the time is nine twenty-eight. The Board, uh, of Commissioners, sitting as a Board of Emergency Medical Services District, is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Uh, Commissioner Daly and myself are present, Commissioner, uh, Davidson is absent, we also have with us.
Emma Taylor, Prosecutor's Office.
Agua Della Prosecutor's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan Communications.
Original IT guy, Tri- Triple Clerk.
Sean Rain, Paramedics.
All right, so we're ready, Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, uh, first item of business, the claims journal, I'll accept the motion on the claims journal.
I move to authorize payment of the claims as listed on the claims journal dated December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
We have personnel actions, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary of sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, approval of minutes, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye. Motion carries. Now, we have an EMS update from our esteemed director.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daly, good morning. Uh, just to give you an update, this morning, uh, we have been extremely busy, uh, just since six o'clock this morning, we've had thirty-eight fall victims with that ice, and have been out of units multiple times, so, um, we staffed up a couple additional units with people that came in off-duty, and hopefully when it warms up, things will settle down a little bit, but, uh, this happens occasionally.
On sidewalks and stuff, yeah?
Yeah, I, uh, when I stepped outside of my house this morning, I thought I was gonna go down, so.
Yes, it didn't appear to, it didn't appear to be icy.
No, it looked like it was just raining, but.
I guess I'm lucky, I just stepped into my garage. Have no ice in there.
No ice in the garage.
Oh.
So, uh, an update on the Sustainability Task Force, we had a meeting on Friday. Uh, the Bureau Chief went through the funding formula that they've got, uh, and this is just the first step, but basically what they're trying to do is take the, kind of the, uh, area of a county in square miles, and there's a formula that incorporates area, population, and call volume. And, uh, we run a quarter of the calls for the entire state of Idaho, just here in Ada County every year, so I'm, it's no big surprise because of the population density here. But what that means is a small county like Oauaihe County or Clark County, they're looking at, they would probably get four hundred thousand dollars that first year. The, with the form, uh, funding formula, Ada County would get two hundred thousand dollars the first year. Yeah, I.
They, what's, how's the formula then?
It's, uh, air, area.
Area and population.
Population, with a factor for calls per, uh, per population, so when you factor in that we run thirty-six thousand calls and with the population, uh, it makes it look like we, uh, well, our calls per population are actually lower than some other counties when you factor in, you know, Clark County only has eight hundred people in it, but they only run, you know, twenty-eight calls a year. So that percentage ends up being higher, so, I did, uh, make a point to say that that's less than one percent of my operating budget uh, annually, so not a, a great help. Um, and, but they are looking at other things with levies, uh, and, and looking at the ambulance taxing district law and seeing if there are some changes that, that need to be made to that law. And it sounds like, uh, Sender Burkey and Sender Harris are working with, uh, and I'm not sure who the members are on the House side, to kind of do a, a collaborative approach to fixing that. The only other thing that I've heard recently is, uh, Representative Horman, Becky Horman from Idaho Falls, it sounds like she's gonna potentially sponsor the bill to move the EMS bureau so that changes about every two weeks, so, we'll see who actually, uh, carries the ball across the goal line on that one if they can get it done, so. Uh, that's really all I have to update you on today, uh, we did do, uh, a class last week, uh, for landfill, for Stop the Bleed and CPR, hands-only CPR, and so that was well-received up there, you know, they're kind of distant from services up at the landfill, and so it's uh, helpful to have them know how to stop serious bleeding and, and do CPR, uh, while we're responding up there, so.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, it appears we have, uh, a need for an executive session, which requires a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn into executive session in accordance with Idaho Code seventy-four-two-oh-six-one-D-F-N-I to discuss course on non-payment, and all documents are required to be kept confidential, and that the vote is to be done by roll call.
Second motion, clerk call roll.
Mr. Daly?
Aye.
Commissioner Beck?
Aye.
I just haven't, let me get you off the record.